No, I can hold anyone back there to turn it on.
Oh.
What page are you on?
Uh, 105, I believe, for when we start capital projects. Capital improvement.
Can you hear me? Is this on?
No.
No, all right, we're waiting.
Test, test. Test, test.
Test, test.
Go get him to turn this on.
Now it's on.
Now it's on. Can you hear me now? It's good? No. Oh, he's not even in there. Okay.
Here he is.
Mine's on.
He's dealing with trash bags.
Hello? Can you hear this?
Oh, yeah, there we go. Good now.
All right. So, why don't we do a first shot at, first cut of capital projects, which is in 105. So, I guess, Carl, just to get off footing here, the first column is what was in last year's budget that has not been spent, right? That's the, right?
Yes.
And then the second is, so to speak, in addition to that, the one that's labeled 2017-18 budget meeting, that's an addition. So, those are an additional.
Yes.
All right. So, if you go to...
Additional or?
Lots of questions.
Additional or what's requested?
It's what is being requested.
Additional requested.
Okay.
So, go to page...
Well, I'm looking at like, 100.
108. Page 108. So, I'm taking that 7 million on the bottom.
Okay, total expenses.
Yeah, that 7,886 is, was in last year's capital projects budget, and that obviously carried, unlike the operating, is carried forward, all right?
Yes.
And that the 2000, the next column, 2017-18 budget meeting, 5,700, is an additional, in addition to that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Anne?
Yeah.
All right, just want to make sure we get off footing.
So, it's 13, or 12 and some change, and 13?
13.
I just want to make sure we, all right.
Okay, so that's what is, here, is like this. It's 50 plus 100.
150, okay.
Right.
So, why don't we just go down, if I can, just go from the top, and just get any observations?
Sure.
And Carl, you know, chip in, whatever, right?
Sure, absolutely.
So, and it's, obviously, there are pages in the back that describe this, but these are big numbers, so for the benefit of the public, it'd be good to... City Hall building repairs, those are essential repairs that are, how would you characterize that?
What is that?
Well? Yes.
Yeah, okay. Exotics in the right of way, it's not a lot of money, but, so to speak, but, so is there a requirement to do that, or we just think we should get going? This is the FPL right of way.
We get complaints about how it looks, and, so if we have an opportunity to clean it up by removing exotics, we do, but again, it's, like you said, it's not a lot of money.
Right, okay. So, contingency, I'm wondering why we have that? In other words, if that's non-departmental contingency, once again, back to the point of, can't we just budget for reserves? And then, if something comes up, can it affect the entire reserve as a contingency?
Right, but there's, there's an issue of moving it between, excuse me, between funds, yes.
Right.
So, this is, particularly as we're wrapping up the downtown project, that, just to make sure that there's, that we're covered on the larger projects.
But we can't, can we not move between funds, though? I thought we've done that.
You can if there, if there's a new source of revenue that would allow it, so, but those fund balance reserves are actually in the general fund, so it's best to go ahead and have a budget in place if you're going to plan on adding to it.
With this in, excuse me, with this in place, is this, I'm going to say it incorrectly, is this easy, is it easier to move this way than it is to do a budget transfer from the fund balance reserves into where we need it?
Yeah, yes, it would be.
But it's still not, we still can do it. If we say we don't want this contingency, we could always, at a regularly scheduled meeting, do it, pull it out of reserves, if we think it's that necessary, and pay whatever we need to pay. It's just a little bit more paperwork, a little bit more time and effort.
I'm assuming that we can, yeah.
I think the answer is yes.
It's something that we haven't done.
The capital projects can be funded out of the general fund, or, I mean, I just assume have a clearer line of sight rather than have pockets of contingencies, generally speaking.
Okay.
You know, like, for example, like even in Carl's budget, we didn't talk about there are miscellaneous, miscellaneous. I'd just rather have just a reserve, which is the entire reserve. I mean, if something's going to come forward, it's explained.
Okay.
Same with this.
Could I just make a question? Can we just back up? Because we said that this was additive, but if it's additive, it's not adding? Like, that contingency for 50 and 100 is not 100?
No, they're separate. It's, you add, you're, we are adding to, each, each column is separate, and you add up to get to the total. But the total across the five-year, 17, 18, isn't a part of the five-year, or the, I'm sorry, the carryover, because that relates to a prior year.
Right.
So, the five years are 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, to get to the five-year total.
Okay, so that's...
But the two-year total is 150, 601?
That's correct. The money's available, it's just doesn't appear in the five-year total.
Well, can we just agree to take that out, as long as there's a way to have it available? I mean, that's really what it comes down to. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Water issues, land acquisition.
That's existing.
Sorry? 125. Did I miss something?
No.
125.
That's the acquisition of the property.
That we've already agreed to.
Yeah, we agreed to.
Okay. Beach nourishment, 110.
And we're just pre-funding for eight or nine years from now.
Right.
For council ordinance.
Okay. Interesting, all right. So, here we go, stormwater. Matt here? You just explain... Yeah, would you mind just explaining the 950 and the, I think we know what they are, but 950 and a 222? Can you hear me?
Yeah. All right, here we go.
Matt Feeny, for the record, Public Works Director. The $950,000 is dollars associated with what we expect construction of the Pine Lake Preserve project would cost. We have been seeking alternate funding throughout the last year and a half, through other grant opportunities, through the Water Management District as well, to see if we can offset that. But if we were to have to construct, that's what we anticipate the construction cost would be. This is the $950,000.
So, that's the total for Pine Lake?
Yes, that's, that's what we anticipate it will be. The project is in, has received one of two permits. It was, permits were applied for a year ago. It's received its Water Management District permit. We're awaiting an Army Corps of Engineering permit, which is contingent on a protected species out there. So, we, we expect we'll have that at some point this year, in this coming fiscal year, and then be able to construct.
Is there a way, maybe for the future, especially if we don't get it and this carries forward, to put it as Pine Lake instead of just, because that was my question, what stormwater? Can we put it in Caesar's, something like that? Because the ones following it, we got Spring Creek Restoration, Abernathy Feltz, and then Flo, I mean, just so next year...
Sure, we can do that, if possible.
Just for council and staff's information, we talked about this first part before, but Sanibel last year got, I believe, several million dollars for stormwater. This year, they put in another similar new project, and it got right through the legislature, got into the budget. Both houses went to the governor, and governor vetoed it, but that's, that's the progress they made in Sanibel this year on a new water project. So, Spring Creek restoration plan?
That's funding for the dredging of Spring Creek. We have received both the Army Corps of Engineering permit, which took two years, we received that this spring, as well as the Department of Environmental Protection permit. So, those dollars are what we anticipate to be the construction dollars, as well as the construction, engineering, and inspection dollars associated with verifying that we construct what we need to construct.
So, that total is about 222 and 226?
It's about $479,000.
Yeah. I don't want to hold up the parade today, but it would be, and we've had the presentation on this, but it would be good to understand, again, a little bit where we are on this, our requirements under the DEP, nitrogen reduction, which is where Pine Lake's coming from, right? And like, where exactly we are, where we need to be by when. I don't think we need to discuss that all today, but...
Well, I mean, you can probably answer that in a couple of sentences, right?
Okay, all right, good.
We've, we've received currently 912 pounds of credit from modeling work that we did for septic tanks at Benita Springs Utilities that taken off the table. That was being applied towards a 1,200-pound deficit that we have, which is due here as we come into November. We are monitoring the bioreactor project, which we did receive the legislative appropriation on, to probably make up the remaining 200 pounds out of that project.
Wow.
But, but, you know, it'll be monitoring dependent if we come in the rainy season. Pine Lake, we have modeled at about an 800-pound reduction. However, the folks at the Department of Environmental Protection have taken a more conservative view and see it around 258. So, there's still been some discussion...
200 versus 800?
258, yes.
Wow.
It hinges over which type of land and what nitrogen it's generating. So, we're still in a protracted discussion with them as to what that outcome will be.
Okay, but on our requirements, where are we on that? I mean, in other words, without Pine Lake, we've made the five-year hurdle?
We're close.
Well, no, no, plus your, plus your, the thing you talked about.
Plus, what credit we get with the bioreactor. We should have made the five-year hurdle.
So, we don't need Pine Lake right now to meet any five-year hurdle, assuming you get what you need on the downtown?
Assuming the downtown comes through, the answer is yes.
Okay. So, I mean, one would hope that at a minimum, before we spend almost a million dollars, we understand what the cost benefit is. Is it 800 versus 258?
We're working on that.
Okay.
The out-years under the stormwater, is that also for Pine Lake?
No.
What are those for?
The reason this shows up as the Stormwater Master Plan implementation is because the Stormwater Master Plan was conducted in 2010, that identified several projects to achieve load reduction. And so, we've used that as the vehicle. It was a capital improvement item that was relational to those projects identified in that report. We've used that vehicle as a way to identify the budgetary needs for this load reduction. So, we certainly can, we did this with Feltz Avenue, this was, the project became a reality. We broke it out into a separate capital item.
Okay.
It's council's pleasure, as far as that goes.
So, Carl, not for today, but I would think at some point soon, we can have some discussion about the next five years and what the hurdle, we've done some of this already, but what the hurdles are, and what we're baking in, and what the costs are going to be. I mean, some of that's here, but I just don't want to hold up the whole train today.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Unless people want to do it now, I think, yes.
No. I got a question on Spring Creek.
Go ahead.
Just the Spring Creek Restoration Plan, Matt, a quick question on that. You had 226 this year, and we're carrying it forward. Did we, was the, always the total going to be four something?
Yes.
And we just weren't going to ever budget it until we got the permits? Because this has been, what, a two-year wait on the permits?
It's taken two years to receive the permits. We received the permit in May of this year. So, with, when we looked at this last year, budgetarily, the earliest we could start construction is around this time, assuming that we had the permit at the time. We were not in receipt of the heavy permit from the Army Corps of Engineering, which is, was the challenge. So, we budgeted over a split of years.
Okay, that's always wondering, make sure that we knew from the beginning, we just didn't miss a mark by this much?
No, no.
On Spring Creek, a couple, a couple of years ago, we kind of cleared it out, and now it's kind of grown back up. If we don't move forward on this, how much does it cost us to get, get it re-c cleaned out again?
The first time we cleared it out, we trimmed some mangroves under a DEP permit, I believe it was about $15,000. We since have done some subsequent cleanings, run around six, $5,000 to $6,000. So, it's, it's something that we've been able to handle within our operational budget.
So, it wouldn't come out of cap, okay.
No.
So, we would do that if we deferred, clean it out again?
It's almost independent of this project. This is a dredging project.
Right.
That's a vegetation management project.
Okay. Anybody else on page 105? So, 106, is that Abernathy leftover money, or no?
Yes, there are some, some costs associated with the monitoring that we have utilized that capital fund for. Some of the monitoring costs are in the, the number already, but we've put some equipment in just recently, actually, yesterday, so that we can monitor the volumes, and then conduct the monitoring plan, which will really happen this summer.
Okay. In the next batch, I guess, on the asphalt overlays, we can't defer or defer, is that the point?
We, we have deferred in the past.
Right.
And really, the road conditions, we're starting to experience a point where if we defer any longer, we'll get into substantial failure and more expense to, to bring some of these roads back up to, to a drivable condition. So, really, my advice would be to, to start to move forward, if we can, with asphalt overlays this year.
Okay. On the railroad crossing, so, is that a function, the 308, a function of a notion that you think we can do repairs as opposed to replacements?
It's, it's a combined notion. I looked at which railroad crossings we are experiencing some maintenance issues with currently, and, as well as some areas that the railroad has identified as in need of repair in the future, and applied a replacement number from a meeting we had had with them across the lineal footage, as it seemed would be appropriate, but with the understanding that we may pursue repairs on some of those crossings, and maybe the more costly approaches on crossings where it makes more sense. So, for example, maybe Terry Street, which is one that we're having some issues with, because of the volume of traffic, maybe we would pursue a more, more robust repair, whereas some of the other streets like Burnwood or Imperial Harbor, we would just do a simple repair with the railroad, should the need arise.
But I thought that would cost a heck of a lot more than 308.
I've had some discussions with some folks from FDOT, and I think, I think those numbers are within the range...
Good.
...that will work for us.
All right, thank you. Can I ask what exactly the downtown signage is? I know what signage is, but this, the 40,000?
There was a request by the downtown, oh, there was a request by the Downtown Alliance several minutes ago, and it was discussed about the potential of wayfinding signage.
Right.
Similar to a lot of downtowns have, of where to find different facilities, so that I think that was the...
Right, they're looking for a unified signage plan down there?
Yeah, but I'm just...
Which we don't have.
Right, but I'm just wondering how that interprets into reality. In other words, like, exactly what?
This would provide for a study, as well as, a study as well as implementation?
I guess my suggestion, that would be, come back to council, so we understand that more. Is that the notion?
Correct.
I mean, this is not like approval here, this is whether to go ahead with a study would be coming to council?
Well, the proposal is, the proposal from staff is, do it. I mean, that's a recommendation, so...
But, do we really need a study? I mean, can't we look at what other towns have done, and then just say, if that looks great, let's just replicate that?
Sure, if you want to do that.
But don't we need sort of a citywide signage plan? Don't we have some consultants to do the pedestrian bike things? They're going to do signage, and Benita Beach Road is going to do signage, so we can't just, you know, who, who would be the overriding entity? The downtown, or just citywide?
Well, it depends on what council wants to do. I mean, there are some thoughts that downtown should have a unique look, perhaps, as opposed to what would otherwise be citywide. Council may want to do citywide plus downtown, and have the same look and tie it all together, so...
And also typically, there's surveying that's done of where those locations should happen, whether they should be kiosks, how do they direct you to the other facilities that are adjacent to the downtown?
I guess my question was more a process point as well, which is, any of these other items, for example, on this group, you know, there's money in the budget, for sure, but there's money in the budget, council wants to, Bike Pad's a good example, but it's not like, well, there it is, go do it. You know, it comes back to council to understand exactly how we're spending that money. So, that's, I mean, that's...
That's, that's how I understood it, correct? I mean, what it would be is, there would be a proposal, whether we have an add-on to an existing contract we have with someone who does that kind of wayfinding signage, or we do new RFP, all that would be brought to you in the form of a contract. But there is survey work that does need to be done. We can also, you know, look at other examples of other cities and provide that, but there is some engineering involved to that, and then there would also be design work on that signage, creating a unique look, as opposed to what Delray Beach has, or...
Right. It's like, I'm not against it, I just don't understand it, you know, because, and I know what sign is, but, you know, obviously, one thing with signs is, too many signs is clutter, all right? And there's also, first, the point that Amy made, what about the whole city? And then, I'm just really kind of scratching my head, and this is what we need to understand, I think, about, well, what, what exactly would be on the signs with respect to what? I mean, what Riverside Park is here, Wiles Hotel is there?
There would be some directional signage, yes.
Yeah.
And typically, and this would be a structure we'd have to explore further, but typically, they also have directories to different, the downtown businesses as well, and should that be a cost recovery involved in that, too? Should there be a model where if they're on the signage? For example, downtown Flagler Beach has signs at several different blocks, and it does direct you to the city hall, would be co-enforcement offices, Riverside Park, main events, but then it also has ABC windsurfing this way. There's, so there, there would be some discussion that has to look, we'd have to look at other cities and how it is, but they do it in a more creative, and also, not different logos, and, and, like you said, they could have sign clutter, so it's a uniform artistic look to it that brands that city. And also, cities sometimes have directory maps. Asheville, North Carolina, has a kiosk with a directory map, different walking trails that are available through the downtown, but then there is pinpointing certain locations as well. So, it does require further analysis, but it was a request from the Downtown Alliance. That, that artistic design would also have to tie in as well with signage we do for the bicycle trails and citywide directories, too.
I guess one of these thoughts in my head is, yeah, fine, but we also had this great group, Historic Preservation, came in, they won $50,000 as volunteers, they're going to work on that, with respect to, you know, Historic Village or whatever. It's kind of like, how do you weigh all this stuff? It's interesting. Fred?
I think that we do need to do these things. I think one solution would be not to show it as a budget line item, but when we get this CPZ, you know, we already got the Alta, and both of them are experts at this kind of stuff, and we, we may have to give them a little extra money, which we can approve.
Right.
And then we've, we find out what we need from experts, along with our own staff input.
I think that's what they're asking for, that 40,000, whether we hire another firm or give it to those.
I don't, I don't think it would cost 40 if you do it the way I'm talking.
Well, I think it's that and the signage.
I think you'd be looking at maybe 10 grand from one of them, whichever one you pick.
Mike, do you have any more insight on this?
Well...
This is kind of like...
Well, I know the Downtown Alliance, you know, we'd like to see some signage down there for wayfinding, just to help people out. But I'm kind of, the notion, what I see is spending a lot of money on all these different studies, and, I don't know, I just don't know if it's really worked spending that much money on studies, when you could put that money towards actually doing it.
That's what I mean, for a sign or something like...
That's what I'm, you know, where I'm at. Because I'm guessing this 40,000 is for the study, and then the next budget year is 100,000, and then the next budget year is 50,000. So, I'm guessing the 150 is for implementation, and the 40 is only for the study, which, I don't, you know, that's a lot of money for signs, and...
And what I'm proposing is you get somebody that's got the reputation, done it.
Right.
You give them a little bit of money, and they'll even give you what kind of money it's going to cost, and what you can pick, menu of choices, and then one other thing, that is, I would think some of the merchants and people may want to contribute a little bit to those signage boards that say to go to such and such location, you go here. I mean, not a lot, but every little bit of money we get.
It's a similar conversation to what we had the other day about parks.
Right.
Your concept.
Exactly.
I think that makes sense.
Because even in the most basic form, you know, just having a signage down there that shows them they can walk, you know, from the Van Shell over to Depot Park, and then over to Island Park, and, you know, and then the Historical Society House is right over there, just to kind of give them an idea of, you are already here, but just walking, you can hit these other points.
Right.
Something like that, I don't think would cost a lot of money. I, I don't know, I'm not exactly sure, I'm in the Downtown Alliance, but I don't know if they wanted signs up and down the street, showing everything, you know, and how detailed it would get. I don't think we would need a ton of signs, and I, just in my head, I don't see almost $200,000 worth of signs and study, but...
Well, and I think, I think they were looking at signs not only up and down the renovated Old 41, but they were looking for directional signs outside of Old 41 to get you to Old 41, to the downtown area.
It's actually part of that white paper, same thing.
So...
Right? The white paper we talked about, it's supposed to be the whole thing.
Well, it's under development, but we're not very...
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, I mean, that's another element of it. Can I ask this? What do we have in here for urban design, right? We had 50, because this is a subset of that. We had 50 that's not been used, right? It must be somewhere here.
Urban design is page 105.
We're past it?
Page 105, it's a 279 departmental.
279, non-departmental.
Yes. Line item 4911.
50, right? 50,000?
Yes.
And then we have 54 on page 107 for the Parks Master Plan, and we kind of folded that into urban design on Wednesday. I mean, and we had, have 40 here. What if we had like, a number of 150 to 200, or 140 to 200 for urban design that takes all this into account?
To include all that.
To include all that.
We can do that?
Does that make sense?
I think that would also help provide a consistent branding message on all urban design.
From the parks to the, whatever.
From the parks to the, to our linear parks, which would be our multi-muse pathways to the downtown, a consistent branding message, and architectural design for those signs.
Okay.
Because if you look at different communities, they have different uniqueness that brands that community through that, through that signage.
And it may be more than signs, and maybe other things as well.
Kiosks, and maps, and trails.
Right. So, you want to make that 200? I don't know where we are in dollars here, but make it 200 and put it on place for urban design?
Put it somewhere.
In other words, 100 extra. We already have 50 left over from last, we have 100 left over from last year, so it's another 100.
So, we'll add 60 to the 40, we get a total of 100?
Yeah, no, I would just call it, wherever urban design is...
Urban design.
And take out the urban design.
4911.
In other words.
And take it to zero.
And I would move, I would move the parks, if it's allowed, to move the Parks Master Plan into the number for last year, which would be 100, if you're allowed to do that.
Yeah, redesignate Parks and Recs to urban design and then.
Right, then another 100 under.
This year's.
Right, 2017-18 budget meeting.
Okay.
And that would be on the first page, 105. And then you would take out, obviously, Parks Master Plan and take out these line items for, wherever we are.
Downtown signage.
Thank you. Downtown signage, take those line items out.
And, and take out the 100,000 for.
I don't think we know what it is, I mean.
That's for implementation.
Yeah, I don't think we know what it is. I mean, we could do.
We'll just hold on that once we find out.
We can hold on that until we get more clarification.
Right.
I'd like to make one impassioned plea.
Impassioned.
Other than parks, you've got three good companies on contract, Tool, CPZ About, and then Alta.
Right.
Go to them, don't be doing, screwing around writing little contracts for these things because you've got the expertise among one of those.
Right, that's what I mean, well, I mean, I think staff knows to go to them first. And if they can't do the work, then we'll have to.
Right.
I mean, I think staff knows that.
We're fine, yeah, we're fine.
And I think staff will see.
Actually, which is the one.
And it'll save us time and money, too.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Downtown parking study.
What is that all about?
Another study.
Yeah, again with studies, but I mean, we do need parking down there. So I don't know, can we just add parking? Or do we need a study to say where we put it, how much we need and?
If you want us to try to calculate that and just try to implement, we can do that. Obviously, we would bring any recommendations to council.
Right, and by the way, there's another big capital item, right? We're talking about this morning, how we need to build up. And that's not going to be cheap.
No, I'll tell you what, even if we use city-owned land, it would not be cheap.
Right.
The parking garage is, I think, 16, 18,000 a slot, so.
Is that what it is?
On the, on the low end.
Yeah.
On the low end. So what is that? What, what's a ballpark for a parking garage?
Well, we'd be talking, probably a couple hundred or more spots at least.
Oh, yeah.
Millions.
It's a million.
It adds up.
100 spots of you.
Yeah, or they're putting a new one up in Naples. How, what's the price on that one? They're doing it anymore.
We can find out.
If it's 16,000 a spot and you put 100 spots, it's 1.6. All right, so, that's more relevant.
Okay, so, going to remove the number there?
Yeah, remove the 20.
Okay.
And it's not like a broken record, but for a reason. I think that's got to be in that white paper.
Understood.
Yeah. I kind of estimate that Mike and Greg are getting it, or Amy are getting it.
Going to make, make a point, I don't know if it's appropriate place, but one thing that's happened in the old downtown renovation is that the accessories, the waste baskets, the benches, those things, they've only, they've limited it basically to the street. So when you go right into a facility that the city owns, that's abutting the street, like Delisle's Little Plaza, Banshell Park, whatever, you're going to have the same old stuff in there. I don't know that you may not, Matt and I have talked about it as just a windish, probably 40, 50 grand, you could get enough stuff that would match what we're going to have on the street to do most of those public areas that we own. You may want to consider doing.
So I think that's back to, I tell you my general.
That could be in urban design.
Yeah, or in the, my general view is, yeah.
Well, we need to update.
Yeah, because it's kind of like, we spent tens of millions of dollars downtown. And, and rather than just like some of this, some of that, let's get a whole picture of what, what we think. And that, all this stuff should be in one, in one photograph, so to speak, an economic photograph. And then we can make our decisions.
Same thing that goes right to the next line item, downtown redevelopment.
Same thing.
I mean, it's there, and that may take care of what Fred's talking about after the white paper, after we figure out what we need. But what is that number meant to be?
Yeah, there, there's an answer on that, I believe.
The electrical connections.
I think that's what.
Oh.
Commercial.
Sorry.
That is the electrical service connections for the underground electric. So the mainline infrastructure is underground, but we have to connect to each of the individual businesses. I think it's 20, 26 throughout that corridor, and that's what those, those dollars are allocated for. That's the intent.
Wow, no, never mind. Okay. So down to Rec Center, 7, 800 dollars a lawn system, I assume that doesn't need an explanation. Community parks and ball fields. It's pa, sealing the parking, is that what it is? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Community pool, I think Nicole talked about this, but, previously, right?
She's coming up now.
Oh, okay.
Yep. You're talking $100,000 request?
Right. Bottom of 107.
Hi, for the record, Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director. The 100,000 under the community pool is for the geothermal heating and cooling. Our current pool heater is 25 years old, 26 years old. It is on its last legs. We got through this winter, but if we do have another cold one, we don't believe it's going to last this year. We did do a, kind of, some research on what's the best, most cost-effective, energy-saving, sustainability way to go. Geothermal seemed to be the best process, as well as it would get us sustainability points for our next go-around for our gold standard. So, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, if you have specific questions, I do have some numbers on why we chose geothermal just versus replacing what we already have. Replacing what we already have, just the similar situation, would be about 75,000. So it is about 25,000 more to go geothermal, but it's a lot more cost-effective on our end. It won't use the electricity and all those things that the current one is using.
This is what the YMCA did, two years ago.
Yeah, this is what most pools are going to.
Yeah, we did that in our pool, community pool. The energy savings are unbelievable, really.
Yeah. Any other questions about that?
Just, I'm assuming a five-year warranty since it's, or a five-year life expectancy?
For the geothermal?
Yeah, the only reason I say that is because, oh, it's a five-year toll, never mind.
Yes, a five-year toll.
I thought it was a five-year thing.
Yes, we're looking at 15 years, most likely.
15 years.
That's pretty much.
When's, when's the payback occur on the initial investment?
We are, based on our numbers that we've looked at, it should be a payback within five years.
So the next 10 years, you're alternating money for the replacement.
So, thank you.
Sure.
I don't see anything else here. That's large numbers, seal coating, I'm on page 108, seal coating, et cetera. But why don't we then go to whatever you have in capital projects on?
Mr. Mayor, by Mike, that's right. Nicole, stay up there for a second. If we go to line item 6008, which is the skate park, 175, council approved that.
What page is that on?
Last year, I'm sorry, we're on 108.
The top.
108?
Right.
Okay, so council approved 175,000 last year. We want to make sure council understands that this is not going to be a large skate park. I mean, it's basically going to be a concrete skate area. And what percentage, we just want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, well, once we, we've met with different skate park companies, we've met with different firms that do the building, and it's coming down to 175,000 is only going to buy us one-fifth of the size that we currently have. So it'd be very, very small. So that's something they wanted to come back to you as, 175,000 is a lot of money.
I apologize if it's just me, but maybe closer to the microphone, thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
Okay, good to hear you.
But 175,000 is only going to get you a very small area of about 4,000 square feet. And in terms of concrete skate park, that's not very large at all.
Right.
So, we weren't sure, we wanted a little bit more direction.
We're not asking for more money, we just, this is just a point of information.
Well, I think they should come back to council at a meeting to understand it, rather than on the fly.
We can do that.
Sure.
People agree with that?
Sure.
Yeah, because, I mean.
I think we should look into whether we should have it at all. That was the point that I made when we brought it up the first time, because of the low usage. But we could talk about it in council. I mean, my perspective is if we're not going to have something that's going to attract people there, the usage will even be less.
Correct, and that was kind of our concern as well, is it being so small that it, the difference is it will be open without any fee, and it would be open like our other parks from the dawn to dusk, whereas now it currently has special hours. But due to the size, that was something that we were a little bit concerned about.
Okay. So, Col, the way I kind of like to think about this, council agrees, is, I mean, this is a budget, but so to speak, the appropriations take place on an individual basis. This is the same as we're doing with the bike paths. We have money in the budget, but it comes to council for, to appropriate the money for the particular project.
When we're, when we're doing contracts and things like that.
Right, not, not $7,000 for resealing of a park.
Right, major things, right.
So this would be in that category.
One thing on that process that vice deputy mayor has outlined, to make sure that if you're doing it that way, that, I don't think we should even start writing the RFP or anything until you come in and get in-state things jargony should be released from the controlling board and where the controlling board will move forward. Because it costs time and effort to even write the RFP and all that.
I think that's what you'd do anyhow, Col.
Typically, what we do, I mean, we'll, we'll come back to you.
Right.
Just to make sure there's a full understanding of this.
Yeah, in the past, they'd say, hey, we want to put an RFP out for all these guys.
It's like when we had the parks the other day, they kind of.
Exactly.
What are we doing, what are we doing on River Park, by the way? 227, what's that for?
That's a good point. Nicole, can you talk about that?
Here, just carrying it forward.
Yeah, but what is it?
Yeah, the 226,000 is actually TDC funding to build a fishing platform at River Park. It will be adjacent to the bridge on Old, on New 41. So, that isn't, I don't think any of it is city dollars, I don't believe. No, it's all TDC funding that we've acquired and built up over several years. The reason it's been carried over is due to we're still awaiting our Army Corps of Engineer permitting. As soon as we get that permit, we'll be able to do it. We are actually almost three years into that one now. But we actually had to renew it, and we had some issues with that. Alex and Audrey's department helped us. There were some issues with our old permit, we had to get fixed, and then now we're in the renewal process. But we are working on it.
This is the one that's going to be $2 million?
No.
No, this is all, this is the entire expense?
That's the entire expense.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and then that's the last project we have scheduled at River Park.
Okay.
So why don't we turn to Ann's handout, there are capital projects on there. Does Peter have this? Send us. No, I miss it.
No.
All right. Peter, we're, we're looking at these, so to speak, funding requests that are not reflected in this budget, but that were put on a separate sheet of paper.
Okay.
So actually, the first one is funding for the high school.
This, this came out of a request for sponsorship of certain items at the high school from the school board. There was some discussion previously at council level to think about $200,000, and that would sponsor the construction of a particular item over there. But don't know how council feels about that.
My view is.
Well, I'll just, and Peter, you, oh, Flynn, you probably know as much, if not more than me, on this. I know, obviously, we're talking public funding here because we're city council. There are quite a few efforts, or at least in Benita Bay, in terms of funding. Do you know where that is, Peter, in terms of updates?
You know, I don't have anything recent. I know that as of a month ago, I think they said they were well up to, here's the conversation I remember. Naming rights on the gym was something like $150,000, but that was good for five years. And if you wanted it for a longer period of time, it was $300,000, my recollection. And that they were up to the 150 or something and going for more. I don't know if that's accurate, but that's what I remember.
Right, right, and there was a gentleman.
From Canada.
His name's escaping me.
Right.
Who had said, okay, this is, this is where we are with Benita Bay, and we would like the city to be involved.
Oh, did he? Oh, I hadn't heard that part of it. Okay.
Okay.
I would not, to me, this is one of these things that I think we would love to do, but considering all our other priorities, would not be on the top of the list. If we were flush with money for capital projects, it'd be a different matter. Oh, that's my, my view.
Yeah, I, I would say, the only way I'd do it is, if there's something we can do that specifically will benefit all of the city people, they would have access to it. But doing something that's just for the school.
And we are working on bike paths and such that benefit kids.
We're doing a lot anyway.
We're doing a lot, yeah, yeah.
And we're also working on joint use agreements.
Okay.
In fact, they want to use, in particular, our pool, probably in perpetuity, right? Because they're not going to have their own pool. And of course, we're looking for reciprocal opportunities for the residents to be able to use the high school property as well when it's developed. So that's going on right now, and Nicole's heading that up.
Well, it's exciting.
Yep.
Yeah, it'd be different if we knew what this was going for, but just to give them to them for sod somewhere.
Correct.
Well, and on the pie chart of where the taxpayer money goes to on, you know, taxes, 46% went to school, both state and local, so I mean, the city's 5%. So why, why should we have to chip in anymore?
Maybe to give us a ban.
Well, yeah, if it's for a ban for the Fourth of July every year, then.
The ban, yes, the free ban.
So is the rough math on that, about $70 million from Benita Springs taxpayers? I guess it would be. Yeah, to the schools, yeah. Well spent, but. Water Tower Observation Deck discussion, Peter, 750,000.
Too much.
But now, is this the Water Tower, or is this the, there are two items on here. Where's the I-75 monument? Must be here.
Flagpole, American flag.
Yeah, I thought it was more than that, though, I thought it was a, something more. Oh, here it is, yeah, yeah, additional money to finalize lighthouse stuff. So, item four is.
That's the Astero Boulevard.
Right.
Property.
Right, up by the Big Hickory. And that has 750. And then, item six is additional money needed to finalize lighthouse-style monument and I-75, 450. And then, and then 10 is US 41 Bridge Beautification Project, it says to be determined.
Because we really don't know exactly what that is yet.
Right, well, we don't know what the other ones are either, I'm not, not going to.
But, understand, yeah, and those are ballpark numbers.
Those are very ballpark numbers provided by the city's architect on, but definitely ranges because we haven't looked at the actual site of land, any site preparation.
Peter, do you want to weigh in on that, or have you heard me?
I heard, you know, in any particular order or just in general?
In general, if you want, whatever you want.
Yeah, no, I just, I don't know, I'm trying to say this delicately. I don't know where things would be or where they wouldn't be in terms of the Water Tower project, given what, you know, transpired the last couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
But.
Understood, that was delicate.
That was, that was, that was good, sir.
Yeah.
Tip toe in there.
So, not to move on to something else, but I, I don't know, you know.
Right.
I don't know. But, out on the highway, I, you know, I, we, we talked about branding and tying in, you know, aspects of Old 41 and things we're looking at doing on the various bridges, and obviously, that architectural rendering of downtown, which, you know, I discussed with Arlene, and I think Carl, to an extent, a ways back. And Arlene, I apologize if you said this, did the arts in public places, did they formally adopt that rendering, or are they kind of waiting to see what direction we want to go? Or where are we with that?
They, they felt that that was in keeping with the overall branding of the city, that, that design, because it was consistent with the downtown. But they're looking forward also for council's approval on that. They didn't, they did not adopt an actual budget towards it, but they felt it was in keeping. We have two routes we can go. We have two routes we can go. We can do a request for proposals for an engineer, architect, to do some design work, or we do have the opportunity to continue working with the city's architect as well to kind of...
Now, which project you told everybody to talk about?
I told I-75. They, they actually, the Art and Public Places Board reviewed I-75, the, the bridge and the Imperial River on US forty-one.
Right.
And they approved, they reviewed the water tower. Their firm recommendation that they voted on is that the city should not pursue a mural on the water tower on Hickory Island, that, that, that would be because of conditions out there with salt, water, and maintenance issues. They did feel that the, the, the Observation Deck was in keeping with the architectural design of the city and then all the tying in the downtown. They, they were concerned about cost and they were concerned about public access, they were concerned about parking. They looked at other details to that. They were very interested in the I-75. They prioritized city-owned property or other inter-local government properties, such as the school bar property, as first priority because of cost savings. But they know an analysis needs to be done on where that would actually be located, the land, and there's some engineering costs. So we can do an RFP to have a firm on board to start design work on that, or we could also continue working with the city's architect who we have in our contract, who those were their designs.
But what's our design concept?
The drawing that was within the downtown has a tower...
Oh, that's right.
In the center. We, we show that to council and council adopted, or generally adopted with further
But we don't, we don't have a tower downtown.
We don't. That was part of the concept for the downtown.
That's the whole point, is that we could go to an alternative design because we haven't branded the downtown that way, you know, and we, there might be some better ideas out there, that's all I'm saying.
So, yeah, that was, design was taken off over from the adopted drawings, renderings we have for the downtown of what could future be, be in the downtown. And that specific drawing was what could happen at...
Bamboo.
The bamboo site, which would be part of a further request for proposals for developer to do. So you'd be able to provide some direction to that developer. So that architectural rendering that was adopted, they, they did feel that that tower wasn't fitting and that's what we presented to the Art and Public Places Board, who was comfortable with those architectural features, the B-board, as, as the mayor says, the lighthouse-type feel, but the, the windows, the, the cupola-type top that was old Florida style. So they recommended all those architectural features that are reflective of the downtown's architecture be implemented in the I-75.
Well, my suggestion would be, I think Sam's a pretty creative guy and he knows our city well and, you know, he knows what the concepts are. I agree with the point. I mean, we don't have a tower downtown.
Say, if we sell it to somebody tomorrow, they may not want that either.
But, but he would be a good person and I think it's cost efficient to work with him rather than go out for an RFP to some consultant again to at least start brainstorming it. I mean, this is something Peter's, Peter, I, you know, you're leading this, so I don't want to, but I mean, to move the ball forward a little more, maybe that's a suggestion. I don't think...
Right, I was just going to say, I mean, I think it, I think there's, if I'm looking at it this the wrong way, I apologize, but I think we need to figure out if there's an appetite from council to, to fund this or put this in this year's budget.
Right.
And then, you know, I hate to say everything else will fall into place because I don't mean to brush it, that, that, you know, that easily aside, but I think we need to get to the heart of the matter. Is there an appetite to fund this? Don't want to pick a, a number out of thin air, but what was that, I think it was, what was that number based on?
It was four, well...
Four hundred fifty.
Yeah, four hundred fifty.
And that, and that was based on?
It was a very rough estimate from Sam Vincent based on the size and width and, and materials to be used, but there's, it could, it's a very raw estimate.
Right, right, well, I mean, I think it goes without saying, master of the obvious again, I am very interested in moving forward on this and if the majority of council is, I'd say we put a placeholder in it. Or, you know, in this budget, in this year's budget, yeah.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, I'm in favor of putting a placeholder in there, but I don't want to foreclose that design. That's because I'm not clear, it's not clear to me that that was a design that was, it came out of the, the downtown rendering, and who did that?
About Sam Vincent.
Okay, so, and how did we come up with that concept? That's my question.
Can I make a suggestion?
So I'm trying to put it in there, but let's try to be creative, you know, maybe there's something better that's more in keeping with what Benita Springs is all about. And if it comes up with the same answer, that's fine, but I'm just saying, let's not foreclose it.
Can I make a suggestion? Put a placeholder in here, but why don't we, we've got a, really a great company, we're about to get a, why don't we ask them what they think? That rendering was done, was not done by some high-powered, I don't want to...
Well, can I, can I suggest that we go with what the mayor said, to put the...
Yeah, we put a placeholder.
For today, put the money in.
Yeah.
Then we can figure out soon rather than later what the next step is. Is that fair, Peter?
It's fair by me, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think what Amy and what Fred are saying are good points, for sure. Yeah, let's allocate the money and then we will micromanage and drill down on the details.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to just put an asterisk by it because I mean, is this, I mean, it's four hundred fifty thousand dollars, I mean...
We don't know.
We, and it could be more, it could be less, but I mean, I guess my thought is, is there, is there somewhere else in the city of more fitting project than branding right now? I mean, we've asked the, the staff to go back and sharpen their pencil.
Well, that's...
Are we, are we not sharpening ours on, can we wait on a, on a, a tower or whatever we're going to do at some point?
Well, I think it's a chicken and egg, right? It's a chicken and egg.
Well, it is, but it's...
In other words, if, if we say we don't have the money, we don't stretch to try to do stuff like this.
Right, and that's it.
So I would, I would, I would put, I mean, obviously, this is coming out of reserves. It's not coming out of excess money being generated this year, as is everything else on this.
Funding.
But I, but I think we have to start doing stuff like this. But we don't know what it's going to cost. That's a fair point. It's best they can do is a placeholder.
Well, and I, and I, not to belabor that, the point is that, that, that we're asking staff to sharpen their pencil and, so we can take what they say, put back in the reserves as we keep pulling out of reserves.
Exactly.
That, that's the point I'm kind of getting at.
Well, that's exactly what we're doing. In other words, we're trying to build up reserves for urban design concepts and road safety projects, bike walk projects.
And I, and I agree with that. I think we need to spin that, but are we poking holes in this boat and asking staff every year to save money so we can put money into that boat?
Well, we've been through that discussion.
Yeah, I know.
It's...
But again, it's an economic question, right?
Yeah, you're, you're right, it's just...
Do we want Benita Springs to be beautiful or do we want to, and increase property values and increase, and increase everything, or do we want, you know, the Waffle House and the same old Benita Beach Road that we've always had?
No, I agree with that.
Or do we want to think outside of the box and make our town something different that, you know, that, that spruces it up, beautifies it, shines it, brands it, makes it highly desirable, and creates more revenue?
All right, and I agree, I agree with you a hundred percent on that, but don't forget, we're trying to, and which we deserve, a Rolls-Royce city. We can't do it on a, we can't do it on a pin-o budget. So going back to my original thing is somewhere down in the future, we may have to raise taxes to do some of this stuff. That's all I'm saying.
But we should at least be aware of what it takes for us to have a sense of place. That's already been well articulated in our comprehensive plan.
I don't disagree with it.
And if we're, if we're not doing that, then we're not, you know, we're not fulfilling our vision. So, I mean, before, we, we spend one dime, other than a couple of tens of thousands here because we have to have a specific thing that we can focus on. We could decide whether that is something we want to bring up now rather than five years from now, but until we really know what that, we embrace that vision or that design, that brand, even the brand, which I'm not a hundred percent sure we've embraced already, but I think it's something that we, we need to talk about. And I, and I know no one wants to talk about adding money, but I'd like to talk about number four.
Number four.
And that has to do with the water tower that's out on the beach.
I think it's out.
And the tower. And I know, and I don't, and I, I hope it's still coming down, but I, I thought it would be worth to look at that property. I know we have a little touchy situations going here, but that we could acquire that property because that is access to the bay there. And maybe instead, instead of putting an observation tower, we could have access to the bay there and I, and I would hope that we could look at that without expending tons of money. A lot of that would be negotiation. Again, just eyeballing it, it seems like it would be ideal, there's already parking there, and maybe we can get a launch of some sort there. So I don't think we should let go of that spot, at least from a strategic planning point of view.
Agree with that.
Yeah.
But not seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think that's out, right?
You know, that's definitely out.
But is that not Lee County property BSU uses, reverts back to them, or I'm thinking of a different spot?
No, my understanding is, is that that was actually deeded to BSU.
For the tower.
For the tower.
Right.
I don't know if there's a reversionary rights.
Right.
If the tower's not there anymore. I didn't get the sense that there, there was a reversionary rights on that.
But it was Lee County, right?
Was Lee County underlying?
Right.
And then they donated it to BSU for the use. But the tower will be going down. I mean, the council made that decision, you weren't, you weren't interested in pursuing that, and BSU was told long ago, right after you made the decision, that they can take it down at their, whenever they're ready.
I think what Amy suggests is a great idea and it probably should really, you know, make it available to the people for access. Shouldn't have cost anything. Like, like to make a point or something for everybody to think about. Benita Beach Road is roughly, what, eight miles long, the part we're interested in? There's more opportunity to do things on that road that are going to have more of an impact on attracting businesses and people to come than there is in that stretch that we're working on called Old. So I, when we go to say we're going to spend four fifty there, I'm not sure you're not better off to put, put four fifty on something that people can see on Beach Road. But this four fifty is the entrance. Pardon?
It is the entrance.
This four fifty is the entrance. Right, at the end, okay. At the highway. Yeah, but anything that we're talking about that's not on Beach Road, I think we should... Okay. Just think about raising, everything we do on Beach Road raises the ad valorem. Right. And there's very little government-owned property comparatively to... All right, we'll run along. Flagpole, forty thousand?
Well, and we, we looked at that because unfortunately, that tower that's there is not load-bearing or weight-bearing, right?
Right.
That's correct.
And let me ask a basic question, which, which obviously I should probably know. What is the purpose of that pole there currently, or what, formally or currently, or same thing? What, what is the purpose of that being there?
Mr. Mayor, it's a communications tower. So it's actually, it's actually a tower that's owned by a communications company and I'm sure they're probably leasing the property from BSU.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving right along.
And I mean, so if they're, I'm sorry if we're just back, so, back to, and that is obviously BSU's land, but the city council once upon a time approved that tower being there, or?
I can, I don't know the answer to that today. We can look into it, but my guess is we had to approve it. And Audrey's shaking her head, yes. We did have to approve it.
Okay. All right, and, and if, and if we decide we don't like how it looks, too bad we're stuck with it, or that ship has sailed, or?
We told them about the one on, on the highway, but...
Yeah, the highway. But it was approved through zoning.
It's by the, it's by the water tower.
I thought it doesn't fit on there.
We've got Audrey coming up, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Sir, what I'll do is after this meeting, I'll call the actual ordinance, doing the, I believe it was a special exception approval, review the conditions and provide you with any guidance.
I was just going to say, I mean, if it's really not serving a purpose, but we're stuck with how it looked, yeah, no, I think we, I think you follow my train of thought.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, can we move, the next point is, was that the flagpole?
Well, it's just what, you know, my simple mind thought was the flagpole, but obviously it isn't.
Okay.
Well, I believe they needed a separate... For forty thousand dollars, we're looking at a separate flagpole in another location and avoiding the BSU property altogether.
Correct.
I think we should...
I'm okay with that.
Whenever I head north on the interstate, there's a huge flag right at the river and going over to North Fort Myers.
Right, yeah.
Very noticeable, you know?
Yeah. And that's...
I'm thinking we ought to get the one from Camping World and be done with it.
Yeah.
That would not be something we want to incorporate into the interchange, where we come, this is what I thought we might want to use that as part of our...
That has been the discussion, is that would be, the proximate location would be the interchange.
So how would that integrate with our lighthouse that we want to do? That's my question.
The lighthouse?
Well, we want, we're talking about...
Talking about Astero Boulevard?
No, that one.
No, the number six.
Called the monument.
The I-75, but I'm...
Lighthouse style monument.
Probably be a separate location.
The Art and Public Places Board did talk a little bit about as far as placement, is you wouldn't want one to detract from the other because you're talking about quite a large flag in order for visibility. So you would be looking at different locations and I think the direction we had received, we did the presentation, was to try to locate it near, as close to the actual interchange as possible. The, the actual I-75 monument may not be adjacent to the interchange, that might be closer to where the high school property is, and there's also city-owned property just south of the high school property. It could incorporate an interlocal with the high school to have the monument on their property too, so...
So this monument wouldn't be on I-75? This lighthouse?
The monument was, we've talked, it's, with the other jurisdictions we've talked to, it's very problematic to place any kind of formal structure on DOT property. So the idea was to first look at city-owned property and/or adjacent interlocal government property, that would be an easier fit.
Along Benita Beach Road?
No, off of I-75. There's property on, that the city owns that's adjacent to I-75.
And you could see it from the highway? Okay.
We presented that, I can, I'll send you a copy, we presented those sites to the council.
Yeah, well, then that's a whole different issue. I think we ought to revisit all that.
Well, I, I think, I'm guessing that Amy's having the same problem. That monument that was talked about by the mayor was to be at the gateway.
Right.
And as soon as you get it away from the interchange up on Imperial Parkway or some other place, it's not the gateway, the real gateway to the city. Can I just make one suggestion? I, I think for budgeting purposes, all we're talking about is, conceptually, do we want this, whether it's a lighthouse or whatever it is, a signature monument on seventy-five and do we want a flagpole? And I think we, you know, it's not to say there aren't issues around all of this. As to where do they fit, where do they go, et cetera, what should it look like, for starters?
Those are all final decisions.
Those are, yeah, but it, but it's just...
Dimensions, exact color?
Right, right. It's just a notion of are we okay with putting, funding it? Right. I agree with that.
Final resting places is to be determined at a later time.
Correct, and what, and what it looks like. I'd like to make a point, though.
Of course.
Apparently, there's been a lot of discussions about other places things are going that council has not been aware of until this minute.
That's interesting.
Not all these, not these things about...
These have all been discussed.
They have, they have.
We had a presentation...
Talked about painting the wall, the whole nine yards.
Right.
Painted different things, I think.
No, we provided a presentation to council with the different drawings and the options, and then we had a site map that we showed the sites of the potential location. So I can make sure that's forwarded to you again from the presentation, but...
Well, irrespective of whether this has been done before, it's clear that we, we it's clear that we, we don't have, we're not clear on this. And it just reiterates my point that I don't think we should foreclose going in a certain direction because the, the branding icon that we're talking about is dependent on its placement. So I think we need to really have another look at it. I'm not against putting $450 or whatever we think we need as a placeholder, but we need a complete, another look-through, in my opinion.
I agree with that. All right, so we're okay with the money, but we need a lot of work to do here.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I absolutely agree.
Number eight, $2,500 for Wounded Warriors softball game. Steve actually had a chat with me about this, not in relation to the council item, but on respect to a private group that might be able to contribute to this. I don't know if they will or not. But I'm okay with this if that's not the case.
Yeah.
Everybody all right with that?
Sure.
Okay, we play street signs. This one was on a list two months ago, my name on it. And I, I don't, I don't take, this is the green and the blue and the schizophrenia that is implicit of that to the average person as opposed to the knowledgeable Benetian. Who knows a green sign's a private road, a blue sign is a public road. But I don't consider this to be like something that should be a special funding request. I'm not saying it doesn't cost money. And that's why I'm getting at the point of we've got to have basic quality level of service requirements around the city. This should not be considered to be beautification, in my view. It should be considered to be a basic quality and level of service. Same thing with, you know, like we've talked about wires hanging from poles. That, to me, is not, fixing that is not, and I think it's important to, the psychology of this, that fixing that is not beautification. Fixing that is a basic level of service. If, if your neighbor had wires hanging all over his house, you wouldn't go over and say, can you beautify your house by taking all those wires down? It would be, you know, come on, man, this is kind of like basic stuff. So I don't know why that should be a special request. I'm not saying it doesn't cost money. But somewhere in what city management's doing, I think we need better, basic quality level of service on the look of the city. So I mean, I give you an idea and I won't prolong this. But, you know, I put that green sheet in on Terry Street. I got a lot of comments from a lot of citizens about it. The other day, I just drove over to Imperial Parkway and Beach Road. I know Beach, we all know Beach Road's a county road, but nevertheless, it's in the city, it's the gateway to the city. And there's a rusted sign there that you can't even read for trailer parks this way, that way. You get over by Old 41, there's a rusted sign you can't read that talks about Seventh Day Adventist Church on Terry Street. And it's all rusted away. Stuff like that needs, from my perspective, to be in the basic mission of city management. Not something that should require approvals for funding. Is my thought.
I, I agree with you on, on the rusted sign part of it. The, the blue and the green, I, I don't see a reason to expend money on making them all blue or making them all green. If we're gonna go that route, I'd rather see us go like Old Naples where they have decorative stop signs and decorative street signs.
Yeah.
But I mean, to just convert them all to blue or to green, I, I don't think we should waste money on that unless we go the full step, like you're saying, to beautify the whole city.
Right.
Because I, I don't think most people, you know, it's, it's still the same ugly sign, whether it's blue or green.
So that should be in urban design?
Correct.
That would make some sense.
Yeah, so maybe we can add another.
But I would say not, not waste any money on this, converting them all the same color if that is something that we'd like to do down the road.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that. So why don't we just take this money and move it into urban design?
Yeah.
Any, any rusted signs, things like that, it should be upgraded.
We'll get after that, right.
But in regard to the other point that you brought up, Peter, with some of these issues, could that be handled by Neighborhood Services? I mean, they go into neighborhoods.
Well, Frank is doing it.
And say, and, and, and they should point out that this should be corrected and that'd be part of like our, our, our general maintenance budget to just fix it up. That shouldn't be a routine.
Right.
I guess that was gonna be my question. So in the future, will that go in Frank's center or Neighborhood Services' center? And say, you know, road maintenance, or is it gonna go in Matt's?
No, it's not, it's not an appropriate one for Neighborhood Services. They are more in the encouragement and, if necessary, enforcement business. If it has to do with city right-of-way, it's gonna be more Matt. But again, it's something that we can, we can certainly, but it's very confusing because Frank's also been assigned with trying to beautify our right-of-ways, all right? And, but he's focusing on the most difficult part right now, where there's the highest frequency. And that is these utilities.
Right.
Sticking these, what we call matchsticks and delineators in the right-of-way. And Frank and his team's doing a great job of getting those reduced citywide, not just on Terry. When you look at signs and things like that, that's probably gonna be a number of us reporting to somebody, whoever sign that is, to make, make a difference in that, so.
Well, I guess, as a side thing, you know, you're talking about the extra matchsticks and everything else. What about all the extra utility poles? FPNL went and replaced utility poles. They moved their power over, but Comcast, you know, whoever else is on that pole, they haven't moved over, so we have two poles there.
You're, you're right, and we've been working with them for.
Years.
More than a year, yeah, years. To the point where at one point in time, I called up FPL and they said, you know, I was complaining about the second pole not being removed. And they said, well, Comcast is still on there. I'm like, these are your poles, right? Tell them to get off. I mean, so we, and actually got some action after that.
Good.
But the work's not complete yet, that's very clear. But yeah, we continue to be after them on that.
And I do have to say, not to, we, good points there and not to belabor anything, but like you say, you go down, you go down Benita Beach Road, I'll just pick and pick and a road. Well, this is a city sign, this is a county sign, that's a state sign, this is Comcast, this is Florida Power and Light, this is whomever, whomever, whomever. And this was a sign from forty years ago that's grandfathered in. But, you know, and I think we're on the right track here. What's the master plan, for lack of a better term? And I know this is a budget workshop, I completely get that. But what is the master plan? So there's not two extra poles and there's not three extra signs and a rusted sign and five colors and Jersey barrier riprap over the, you know, what, what is the ebb and flow here? Or quite frankly, moving forward, what is the beautiful flow?
Well, it's still gonna be our efforts to beautify the right-of-ways. And that's probably gonna have to be a combination of Neighborhood Services and Public Works.
If I might, I just, I know it's just a word, but I don't think this is beautification. I think beautification is, yeah, this is maintenance.
How about basic standards?
Basic standards. Beautification is the next step, which we're not really talking about here, so I mean.
When we bury all the poles, then it'll be beautification.
So I mean, here, the other day, I just, I mean, I, I know this is a budget workshop, but I mean, this, you can't see this, I guess, but I just took a ride down Beach Road. Like, here's something sticking up in the middle of the median on Beach, on Beach Road. It's probably been there since it got widened, you know? And here's another pole sticking up with some wire coming out of it. Once again, on Beach Road, it's probably been there since it got widened. That's the Seventh Day Adventist sign. I mean, do we really need to tell somebody Benita Springs Chamber of Commerce is 4.9 miles down the road? I'm not sure, but, you know. Then there are others, too. I mean, so this is on the corner of Old 41 and Beach Road. It's where the gas station is. And these are evidently old foundations for light stanchions that are concrete that have been sitting there forever, unused. There are two of them, three of them, I guess. You know, on the corner, there's a bar, barricade just there. So somehow, somebody just used the word, I mean, whatever the system is, Carl, I think my own view is staff's gotta really get on top of that.
We're doing the best we can, sir, right now.
Well.
I mean, given the amount in all of our right-of-ways.
Right.
And this is, will be an ongoing issue. Because you can have, you can have everything pretty well cleaned up and then to cer, to a certain standard.
Right.
And then new things pop up. It'll be an ongoing issue.
See, and my view is, if you're not equipped to do it, maybe each council person should drive around with a clipboard. And I'm surprised that staff's not doing this. Each council person should drive around with a clipboard in their own neighborhood and their own district and make a mark of the fifty to hundred to two hundred things that are like that.
That should, you shouldn't have to do that.
Exactly.
Well, sign me up, I'm all in, but remember, I'm district list. But I'm happy to dive in.
No, I don't think we should be doing this.
You have to do all of it.
You have to do that.
Well, I know, but, but I think it's important, but I think it's important and as obviously you do.
Right.
I'll do one.
And I'm happy to help if need be.
On the thing you were talking about, which is what I call the biggest of the litter that should go, and that's where you have a new FPL pole and then you got the old pole there and that apparently Comcast is on it.
Right.
Audrey, do, is, what's going on, I believe, is Comcast is paying so much a pole to put their line on an FPL pole.
Right.
When FPL stops using that pole as a power transmission pole, holding a wire or something, is there any way we can say that pole was abandoned and you, you either pay the city that or get them to move it over? Because what it is, they don't want to go to the cost to move it.
Oh, wow.
And FPL's collecting money off of them per pole. That's probably the way it is. Can you research that? I'm positive.
I have done the research and undergrounding. I have not done anything as to the tariff and if there is anything of local government requirements. I will tell you that Florida statute, chapter 337, has had substantial changes, including this wonderful legislative year, mostly with Microcell and DAS, but there's also some additional changes related to Comcast and other carriers. We can look into it, but don't necessarily be happy with any responses I may provide.
Okay.
But I'll also ask House, like, Council, because I've been working with Terrell Line on this issue.
Yeah, that's why I mean, it's moving along. So, kind of what Peter was saying about, you know, number nine, replace the street signs. I guess for either when we come back with the final budget or the next tentative budget, are we gonna, is Matt gonna have a line item in his center that for maintenance or replacement of these things? No. It's going, 125 is going to. I, I know that, that's for the beautification. Urban design. Okay. But what about going forward, like you said? Well, well, going forward is, we got, and our lean's really involved in this, and Carl, you know, is, you know, doping out exactly what is our urban design. And I think the line of sight, we're getting to that is, because we keep coming back to this now, and I think it's the line of sight we have is, we have the two sets of designers that are both landscape architects and now staff has to coalesce around. No, no, I, I understand, I understand all that. Like, well, I guess what I'm getting to is what this is for, to replacement of signs. Right. It shouldn't be a funding request. It should be an ongoing maintenance request or in someone's center. Whose center is it going in? Oh, that's up to Carl. That's what I mean, that's all I'm saying is, in the future, there should be a maintenance line item in somebody's request that if a stop sign gets mowed down, who's?
Well, we, we do have funds for that type of maintenance, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's all I was saying.
And my question would be, is it adequate to cover the whole?
Is it doing a little more than we're doing? Because we're gonna do a little more.
Well, I think we need, we need a program.
Yeah, he's got a program. That's why, that's all I was wanting to say.
I think, I think through urban design, we'll know what the program should be and then go from there. I think that's the plan.
So this 125 is getting added to the urban design, it's coming out. It's on his mic.
Right. And that will help to keep all the signage consistent citywide. Your, your wayfinding signage for the downtown should be consistent with your street signs. And then at that point, we'd have to look at a phasing program of how we do that. I mean, there's examples, other street signs in different communities have symbols or decorative designs on them that, that delineate private and public, so.
And we gotta figure out what the design is.
Correct, through the urban design.
Exactly.
And this 125, we're not adding to the 200. So you wanna, you're, we're already at 200, now you're adding?
325. 325 in urban design and implementation, maybe. Right, right. This is why we've gotta build up the fund.
Well, and parking for downtown and everything else.
Right, right.
Been there already.
Exactly.
Right.
It's a hill we gotta climb. Additional funding for DRGR purchases. So.
I, I think this is something that we really need to focus on. And I, and I think we need to try to tap into funding sources for this.
Right.
Because if we don't make any progress on this, the pressure is gonna continue there.
I agree with that.
And it's, it's just critical. I know that Edison Farms is, you know, they're talking about it, but anyone could look at that geography and know that anything north, south and east of there is, is just contiguous. So we, we need to buy some more properties there and secure it for the future of our community.
Well, I think, I, I agree with you, and I think that is 200 enough, is my question. Yeah, the answer, yeah. The answer is.
200 is clearly no.
Right.
No, no.
We do have 75 more.
What's that?
We do have, Community Development's got somewhere around 70 grand or something in a spatial line item to buy wetland area from, I think it was from the ship or something.
Mitigation fund?
Yeah. But it can be, that money is for buying property.
But this could be like a seed money, because whenever, they don't ever give you money for nothing. They have to show that we're doing our fair share, so.
Well, the other question is, is there anything for sale out there other than Edison Farms?
So, you know, there, there's stuff going on, we have to be careful what we say. But let me talk generically, all right? Which is, I pick up on Amy's point. So there was a conversation about three or four years ago about the DRGR. And some people were saying, how could we possibly afford it to buy certain property? And then three months later, there was a request that was put through right here on City Council for $20 million to buy property from Gargulio. But that was in Collier County, and that was Florida Forever money. So, you know, I've always been of the view that this kind of conversation is, gets a little skewed around here, all right? That obviously the money is available, or it has been. Now, Florida Forever's got cut back this year, okay? So it needs to be an effort to find funding sources, consistent with the fact that there's, you know, these are privately owned property. There were not, this is not eminent domain territory, and there's other stuff going on. Clearly, we're not gonna be able to fund that ourselves, at least the way we are now. So I don't. Totally agree with that. Yeah. All right.
I've shown an intent, that we're looking to do something.
Speed message trailer?
There's an attachment here. This is a request from the Sheriff's Department for this specific piece of equipment to assist them with traffic concerns throughout the city. Otherwise, they've gotta go to some type of central request through the Sheriff's Office. And we may or may not get it in a timely fashion.
They don't have some in some warehouse up there in Fort Myers.
No, they make it sound like it's not as easily accessible as you would think.
Or you have to rent it.
They've gotta, they've gotta share it throughout the county.
And if you wanna rent one, you gotta rent through a private vendor that is not cheap. Really? I think it's worth it. I think we could use it for a number of things. Doesn't just have to be slow down or detour. It could be, you know, a message to the city that, hey, this is coming up, whatever. Is that a nice-looking version?
No, it's, it looks so industrial. It's just terrible looking.
Can we put this in urban design grade?
Yeah, we wouldn't.
We could dress it up like a float.
I think there's smaller ones, because we have them in our community. They don't look like that, but they're mostly speed signs.
And so this isn't a, your speed is this, the speed limit? This is just a communication?
Message board.
This is a message board, right.
Well, no, it's not just that.
Father County has a nice-looking, you know, speeding, it's like a little trailer, but it's all enclosed and, you know. But it, but it doesn't give you a message, it just tells you you're speeding and how fast you're going.
Yeah, it's not just a message sign, it's also collecting speed data.
Yeah.
Which may, may not always be shot up on the screen, but it is, has the ability to collect it to see if, in fact, you do have a speeding problem in a particular area.
Which is not a bad thing, if we've got, you know, which you, let's use Pennsylvania and Wisconsin.
Right, I said, we can put it right there.
Slow down right there, and we can actually see, you know, the gentleman that came in and spoke says that everybody's speeding, he's getting passed left and right. Is it an isolated event or is this really happening throughout? And we can also get, I think it comes in with data, all right, on Tuesday nights from whatever to whatever, it's the high point. So that's when we pass with the Sheriff's Office and say, all right, here's what we've collected. Can you have somebody there to keep an eye on that? Lee Dot doesn't have one of these things?
I, I don't know about speed. I mean, that's.
We tried to get one for Benita Grandy South through the Sheriff. We tried to get one for Benita Grande South, through the Sher, and it, it, it took months to get a sign, and I guess we got it for a couple days.
Yeah, this would be ours forever, that's the thing.
But it also, yeah, I'm saying that's, shows you how hard it is to get it, but it also will give you traffic counts and things like that, which would be helpful to that as well.
And this is a request of the Sheriff's Office, so we would give them the money, they would make the purchase.
If we were looking for just the statistics on the second page, you know, it's something that would be in the right of way, but it looks like there's a box that you can add on to the stop sign, or the speed limit signs, and that would give you your traffic counts and everything too. So if we wanted, you know, more information like that, but not the big sign, you know, I'd say get the sign from the Sheriff's Department, but if we wanted the capability of monitoring streets too, but without putting the big sign down, you can get that little box also, and put it on there just to get the stats.
What do people wanna do?
I'd say, go, go with the sign, but I mean, if, if the stats come out to be a valuable tool, maybe we'd wanna get one of those little boxes.
Having two places.
You know?
Okay. I think Mike's point's well made. Okay, everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I think, I think they're add-ons to get all the statistics, so that's more than 18,000.
No, it's included, maybe you look at the.
Last page of the quote.
Not getting an additional box, but they, they already have that on this trailer.
We missed the US, I'm sorry, Mike.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, just what Amy was saying, that all that's included on this quote, and it's 17,684, so it's just 18,000. But that's just the trailer, that's not a second box like I was suggesting.
But why don't we get the second box?
Well, we'll see how this works out first.
Exactly, see, see if it proves valuable or not, and if it doesn't, then we get another box.
Okay.
Okay.
Sold?
Sold.
All right. We missed the US 41 beautification, and we gotta see what this stuff comes back with, but.
You, I was gonna say, you wanna hit these first? Then come back to all the P.
All right, fine.
Because we didn't hit the first one either.
Boardwalk replacement at Riverside, oh, fair point. Oh, fair point, okay. Boardwalk replacement at Riverside Park. Boardwalk replacement at Riverside Park.
Where are you looking for?
15.
Number phone.
Oh, okay, okay.
Nicole, you there?
Where is the boardwalk? Oh.
Where's Riverside Park? Riverside Park, Kayak Blanchet.
Yeah, the boat.
We had just replaced the dock at Riverside, along the river. Now, the boardwalk, which is wooden, is getting pretty rotten as well, so we are proposing that we would replace it with the composite, the same as the new dock, so that they would match, 'cause currently, one is wooden. What we're doing now is, every time we have a board that's warped or standing out, we just take it out and put a new one back down, but it is getting to where we're having to, to replace all of them, so we weren't sure if you wanted to do it now, or wait a little bit longer, but we would make it the composite to match the new dock.
I think composite makes a lot of sense, but if we can wait a little bit, it'd be good, just because it's $200,000. You wanna put it in the budget a year out?
We can do that, sure.
Is that all right? Yeah, put it in, or even, I was gonna say 100 this year, 100 next year, so it's not so much of a bite, but it doesn't matter.
Okay.
200.
Okay.
All right, so.
We'll push it out a year.
16.
What is that?
What is this? A funding request?
That comes from the request from the Downtown Alliance Attachment B, the last page of the packet. This is a letter you received from the Downtown Alliance with their funding request.
Oh.
It also includes in there the discussion that they were looking at signage.
That's what I'm saying.
Didn't we just do signage?
We did, and additionally, part of the work we're doing with wall drip engineering is also including land development code changes, because we understand that looking at the best uses of the property on Old 41, including the mixed use, we're looking at codes, changes that make that more accessible, so we, we have a process to work through that as well.
Okay. So that's.
So we don't need this, is that what you're saying?
It, it's a, it's a request from the Downtown Alliance, we have other ways we're incorporating some of those, unless Carl liked to add anything more to that.
Nope. Great, I think you just explained how it's otherwise being dealt with, so I don't think we need to do.
So we don't need any money?
We don't need.
Pardon?
I'm comfortable with the direction we got from urban design, and additionally, we continue our work with wall drip engineering, and I think we can accomplish many of those goals.
Okay, good. So let's go back, as Greg suggested, to the to be determined's.
Oh, okay.
Peter, they have, are you up there, Pete?
Hello?
Peter?
Sorry, I'm like, I'm delayed, yeah, I keep it on, yeah.
Oh, okay, good. So you're on a seven second, like when you call the sports radio?
Right, right.
So it didn't say anything bad?
Right. So these are to be determined, it's, it's to be determined money for the Fiesta, and I'm just wondering, is that required, or what? Or, I mean, we're trying to.
Well, what, what, what I had asked, and I don't know if it didn't translate, but we have X number of, of events right now, and we have X number of dollars allocated for it, I just wanna have this event added to whatever X number is, for, for total budget, and I know there's a few people not on council, but I've heard from, they, they don't like that, but I think, as, back to our conversation earlier, we need to, we need to reevaluate what we do at our events, and if it's, and this is just in my mind, part of the process. So I'm not, if, I'm not, I'm not requesting a certain dollar amount, if we have four events, or three events, and we've allocated 75,000, I think those are the rough numbers, we need to, we need to do five events now for 75,000, or some other number.
Carl, partially in the interest of time, is this okay for you to take back?
We can look at it, 'cause I think the request is that this is gonna become a city event. Is that, am I understanding that correctly, Mayor?
For 22% of our population, yes, a city event.
City event, but you, are, are you not gonna continue to privately, so to speak?
Absolutely going to continue to, absolutely gonna do that, and, and going to absolutely encourage the other three or four events to do the same.
Right. So last, this year wasn't, aside from some staff that was there, I would assume there wasn't any outside city money applied to it, other than staff, kind of allocation of time, it was privately funded.
I think Laura might be able to add a little bit.
So you're, sorry, so you're suggesting that, Peter, continue to privately fund it?
No, not if it goes in.
No, I don't, I.
Exactly, hear what you said, but.
Are you, are you suggesting you're gonna continue to try to privately fund it?
Absolutely, positively.
Okay.
But I think his point is.
And encourage the other events to do the same, but I'm repeating myself.
All right, all right.
Right.
That's pretty clear to me.
But if it doesn't get any private funding, it, it will be footed by the city, through the special events.
That's not where he's going, though.
Or, or we can look at it the other way, the three or four other events, if they don't get pri, private funding, will be footed by the city, yes, we're saying the same thing.
Okay, so we can move on?
I think what he's saying is just, we have four city events, he wants to make it five, and work with.
But not up the budget.
And work, work on the, work on the 75, you know, each of those events should try to do the best they can to have it privately funded, and then whatever allocations we have from the city would be distributed among the five of that events. Is that correct, or not correct?
It is.
Well, no, that is, that is, that is correct, and I'm a little surprised why it's so complicated, I apologize that I'm not there.
Right.
Yeah, and, and also get to look at who, you know, the nonprofit groups, not to complicate this, that get the proceeds from the beer truck, from the food sales, from whatever X, Y, and Z, also evaluate what nonprofits are in the mix.
I got a question for Laura, if possible. I'll wait till she gets to Mike. Laura, each, doesn't each event have its own, we've got a big special events budget, but each one's got its own little bitty budget, correct?
Yeah, and technically, we do, we have funding for each, each event is a line item. We don't just have four city events, we have, including our veterans events, we also have about, total of 11 city events. Now, we're adding additional wounded warrior event to that, which we have done in the past as a part of Veterans Day, but it didn't have a separate line item.
So I, I guess my, my question back to you, Mr. Mayor, like I said, like Celebrate Benita has a line item of 75,000.
79,000 dollars.
79,000 dollars, you know, the Holiday Inn and Park has X. Do we want to add a line item not to exceed city dollars for this event?
That would add, we can certainly do it that way, and we, but, but part of this is a broader conversation.
Right.
And, and I'll just lay it out there, there's, there's, there's certain nonprofits that always reap the benefit of these events, and there is very little or pri, or no private outreach for these events, I understand they're public events, but my hope is, yes, to add one more event to the mix, I want to evaluate exactly how they're funded, what, if any private participation there is, if there's none, increase private participation, and look at the nonprofit groups over the past 10 years, or however long these events have been going on, that reap the beer, beer sales, food sales, and any incidental money that is made at these events. So, I'm not trying to be crass, I'm really not, but that is, yes, my hope for this conversation.
And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I guess my, my concern, or my being on the special events and, and looking at this, I want this to, I want this to, to go off great. If we don't, let's use Fiesta, since this will only be the second annual, if we don't get the private partnership with them from these nonprofits or whatever, we should have a dollar amount allotted for that, and we may have to raise that line item of special events, to make it go off without a hitch, is my, what I'd like to see.
And I'll, and I'll say it another way, 79,000 dollars with public funding, with zero private funding, I think needs to be reevaluated. So, yes, I think we're saying the same thing.
Could we just provide you with a list of, of the nonprofits that benefit from the city events, as well as any private entities that donate funds, both monetary and in-kind for each event, and then that way, you guys can consider it, would that be appropriate, or no?
That would be, that would be.
That would be very helpful, and let's face it, if 79,000 dollars is allocated for one event, it's gonna be spent. If 62,000 dollars is evaluated, I, I bet you, you're gonna have the same event with very little difference.
But I would suggest, Laura, on that, have a dollar amount associated with it, not just the name of the outfit.
Sure, absolutely.
I think that's what you were suggesting.
Yeah.
And I would also suggest, add to it that, how, that the private party or non-for-profit, how much of it goes into the Benita area versus outside.
I thought we heard that.
And then, but Mr., Mr. Mayor, one, one question I got, and I'm for everything you're saying, but on your event that you now wanna make an official city event, would it still be under the management of the group that put it on the last time, as a subset to the Events Committee, or would it be the Events Committee?
Well, we are in, as you know, we approved this, this committee, we could, that is open for discussion, we can do it any way the council would like to do it.
Well, I'm asking you, you were the one that did it, so tell us what you want.
Well, I'm, I'm, yes, we did it, and we did it with, without a diversity outreach committee, and we did it without any public funding, so it, it proved that it can be done.
Right.
But in terms of the micromanagement of running the event, I am open for discussion, and I think maybe it should be run by this new committee that we have formed.
That would be my thought, but, but I think, it's gotta be coordinated with the Events Committee, but I think if you turn it over, you may not be, may not get much.
Well, you're gonna have different, right, let's face it, you have certain groups that are passionate about different events, not that they don't care about the others, but there's certainly a section of town that would be passionate about this Fiesta event that may or may not be so passionate about one of the other events, and vice versa.
All right. You've already raised a bunch of money for next year's.
Well, there's, 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 there's commitment for next year already, in fact, I'm meeting on the 17th with this group at City Hall to, to discuss next year's events already, but yes, there's, there is private groups that have already committed for two and three years out.
Okay. Are you clear?
And I'm beating a dead horse, but I would encourage these other events to do the same thing, and I won't say anymore about it.
All right, we'll discuss it at the next one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud here, and, you know, no other event, as in this special events, is not ran by the city, that's my only concern, and, and if, and if, and here's, and here's my, my question to you, Mr. Mayor, if you don't want city dollars to go towards this, then what, what is the purpose of bringing it into the city, not leaving it as it is now, as it was before?
Maybe it wasn't clear, I think it should be a hybrid of private and public, and I think every event should be a hybrid of private and public, and, and I would even go so far as to say, has anybody in the private sector ever been approached about a sponsorship for any of these other events?
You're talking about?
The answer is yes.
Right, you're talking about for real money?
Yes, for real money, yes.
Well, we can provide a list, we'll provide a list, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Number five. Official history book of Benita Springs.
This is something that the Historical Committee discussed slightly, but came from the Benita Springs Historical Society, that there had been a few books written about certain segments, or certain parts of Benita Springs history, but the thought was, would it be, would there be an appetite for a book of, you know, the, the entire history, some, some nice deluxe book, hard copy, coffee table edition, that would encapsulate the entire history of Benita Springs? So that's where that came from.
This is the Historical Society, as opposed to the Historic Preservation Board. All right. Would it be better to get a line of sight on exactly what they're thinking about for money, and who would write it, and such?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so why don't we just leave it at that for now, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, number 10, we're getting it, guys, is US 41 Bridge Beautification, gonna put in 3 million for that?
Yeah, why not?
Do you want, I mean, theoretically, I think we did, I mean, when we saved the 750, the 125, we moved over to another one, and 75, we're, we saved a million dollars, if you wanna put something in there.
We did.
Well, I think we.
We didn't. Oh, we all saved 50.
The 125 got moved, it didn't get.
Yeah, 750.
Well, this is all gonna come back again and see what we, what the gula is here, but I mean, you know.
The answer is, we need, we need to get a better idea of what we're talking about there, but we, I think we're all in, in favor of doing something there.
Yeah, but I don't think we need a better idea of what we're gonna do to figure out whether or not we wanna spend money on it, because otherwise, you end up with a chicken and egg, in other words.
Does anybody have any idea what, what the range is, is it 100,000, is it 500,000?
I think that's the conversation we.
Well, do we have any?
I think it goes back to what the mayor said, if you.
No, Arlene, what do you think? Any idea?
Well, we, we originally were just talking the rail numbers, and we were, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, we were around 3, 300 for the.
No, it was less.
Or 2.
You remember he came back with the cheaper?
The cheaper after, after we did the.
We value engineered it. Right, Matt?
Yeah.
And the rail may not be where we're going.
Well, that, that's how we started, yes, and then we discussed some additional funds towards the actual median treatment.
The figures are in. I'd looked, we had looked at it, quasi-decorative rail, and it was around 200 bucks a foot.
Right.
I think we had 1,600 feet, so it was around 300 grand in railing.
Yeah.
But that didn't really include, when we kinda shifted, I don't have an understanding of.
To the middle.
To the middle.
Right.
So.
Why don't we just put 100,000 or something like that in, knowing that's not gonna get us there, but to have some money in the budget.
Well, if the railing's gonna be 300, let's put.
Well, I'm not sure we're going with the railing.
I, I think we should focus on the center island, and I personally think we should focus on the Jersey barriers, because that's what's ugly about the outside there.
I think that's what he's talking about, the railing.
No, he's talking, no, he's talking on the, on the very outside, isn't that what?
No, no, but he was giving you an historical chronology, actually, we are now where you are, for what it's worth, those of us who have been involved.
Well, let's.
Focusing on the middle, and focusing on the Jersey barrier.
Right, well.
But I think for now, whatever it is, is really not exactly that relevant, the question is, do we wanna budget money that we can some, be in a position to allocate, when we do figure out what it is for the project?
Because there will be preliminary, once we decide what the project is.
We're not deciding what the project is, other than it's a beautification of that area.
We could do it in stages, too, we don't have to do it at the same time.
Do the median first, then the Jersey, vice versa.
Exactly. Let's put it, a placeholder for the median, that's what I'm in favor of.
Let's put, split it in the middle, Mike wants three, you want a hundred, let's put one fifty in and go.
One fifty, we're good.
Okay, good.
You want a three?
Well, that's what it's going to take to do the railing. Will I go, have?
Why don't we put two, we're not going to be spending that this year.
We're not going to be spending it anyway, we're just, we're just going to be thinking about it.
Just thinking about it, but let's put two hundred in.
But the railing is going to be replacing the Jersey barrier.
Yeah, not the outside.
All of this has got to be determined.
Yeah, what is the three hundred?
We're not designing it today, we're just trying to find some money for it.
But I heard one place, it was the railing, and somebody else said.
It'll come back before, before they, before the shovel hits the ground, or the sledgehammer hits.
So, in a nutshell, all right, in a nutshell, we started out with a focus on the railing, meaning whoever said that, Amy, the outside railing, okay?
Not the Jersey barrier, but the outside.
The outside railing. There was concern about the Jersey barriers, because they look like, well, you're from New Jersey, Mike. Okay? And then you have this mass of concrete in the middle. And we had various iterations of meeting, when I say we, I'm saying Arlene and I at the Arden Public Places Board, and Matt was involved as well. And so, that went so far, and then Matt had an idea for a fellow who we approved in a green sheet, who was, because there were issues about, like, weight, and if we do anything there, you know, we found, Matt found a fellow who was expert in all of this, who was a very reasonable cost, city council approved that cost, he's a highway engineer, he works with FDOT District One constantly, et cetera, all right. And then, Arlene talked to Sam Vincent, coming out of the ideas from, kind of ballpark ideas that were great from Arden Public Places Board, talked to Sam Vincent, and Sam basically said, I really think the focus should be mostly on the middle island for a bang for your buck. Is that fair, Arlene? And so, that's where the idea from the dolphin came, went through Arden Public Places Board, it was briefly talked about on city council. No decisions have been made with respect to anything, okay? So, that's where we are, that's where we are. And we're awaiting a second iteration of a possible design concept from Sam that's responsive to questions raised from Arden Public Places, as well as Matt and Arlene and myself, and it'll come back to council. That's where we are.
And we understood the direction also from council was to see, how does this relate to the downtown, to the, all the branding, and so, one of the, for example, one of the things we're looking at is the railing and the pokes that are used on the O-41 Bridge, the coral size seashell design, how that could be incorporated as well onto this bridge, so that we have a consistent design. So, that's what Sam's taking another look at.
So, that, that's the process, and that's where we are, there's no decisions made on anything, obviously, every step we've come back to council and talked about, as well as Arden Public Places Board, the decision today, it's simply, is this something we want to allocate money for, whatever it becomes? And I think we've decided yes.
Well, this is a little off point, but are we, do we have a design for what we're going to do over the Imperial Bridge, where we?
That's what we're talking about.
Downtown? I thought we were going, I thought we were going to put, that's not, yeah, that's the Imperial. Similar to what we did on Oak, the Oak Creek, you know, that little arch we have in there? Are we going to put another arch at the other side?
No, no, that's, the only arch in the downtown project was the one over Oak Creek. So, there is not, there are no design plans for a subsequent arch that.
Well, I think we need one at the other end, too, when we do our signs, I think that should be included in that, because that's really, well, I guess if you come from Benita Beach Road, that's the entrance, but a lot of people come down O-41, and I think that was the defining character down there.
Can I ask a question? Who's, who's driving the train professionally on this project, the design?
Which one?
Forty-one Bridge.
What do you mean by professionally?
US-41?
Yeah. Is it Sam Vincent?
What do you mean by professionally? On what train?
I'm saying, who's, who's, who's the one that's kind of guiding the, what we're going to do for, design?
There's no one guiding, we're reaching out for ideas, and Sam, and so, Sam Vincent is one of the one, actually has come up with some creative ideas.
Are we going to?
But he's not guiding us as much as giving us input.
Are we going to reach out to any other?
We don't know, we don't know. In other words, I'm giving you a chronology of what we've done so far.
I would reach out to these people that we're going to have on contract.
All right, it's a possibility.
Well, I think it'd be, I mean, they do Academy Award-winning stuff.
I don't know if they've done sculptures on, but fair point, maybe they should be.
I bet you they, I bet you they've got more experience than what we got so far.
Hopefully, people who have a scope of work, it keeps them bigger every day.
Boy, that's a good contract they're going to have.
Yeah.
So, we were looking at some concepts of what could be accomplished, and then getting some, we were getting feedback from the bridge design engineer, who actually, what exactly is possible. The additional help that the engineer is going to help us with is having very preliminary conversations with DOT to see what we're allowed to do. So, before we get into too much commitment to any particular design or drawing, we need to make sure FDOT is on board as well, and that's what, part of the very minor contract we have with the bridge engineer is to walk us through those meetings. Subsequently, he is also one that has been hired by FDOT to do their preliminary bridge design, so we feel like we're in good hands of what we'll be able to accomplish.
All I'm trying to say is, what I've seen, it, I would hate to see us just end up going that way, because we happen to have some sketches.
Fair point, and I, and I think it's an iterative process, it's the first time we've done something like this, and there are various.
There's a, I forget, there's another bridge or something we, I went across, maybe on Imperial Parkway, but it's simply got the land, the median is landscaped all the way, and that's way better than what we got out there now.
Fair point.
Which is just to see a concrete.
Right.
But I'm not advocating that, but.
No, no, you're right, yeah. So, two fifty.
Two fifty, okay, all right.
Sold. Two fifty, but Ann and Carl are going to come back to us and see what we, you know, what we've got here, all right? Because we're, we're spending money over and above, we're cutting into reserves here, all right, obviously. But it's a good process. Okay.
Thirteen?
Thirteen. Enhanced holiday lighting in downtown to be determined.
Laura's on the way up.
Okay.
This item is just for direction to staff. Currently, we do have holiday lighting at Riverside Park in between the Banchel and the Lyles Hotel. It used to also be at the community hall structure, but once that was torn down, it got moved to Depot Park. That is currently what is in the budget. If you would like to do any additional holiday lighting, we would need direction for that with the new roadway, I know that will be done in October. Completely up to you, just want a direction as to what you'd like us to look into.
Could I make a suggestion on that? If we're going to do it, which I think is a great idea, and especially putting it on the street, come up with something that you can do at other times of the year, because you could give that whole downtown area a completely different look, if you had festive lighting that would come on at night. And I don't think it would cost that much more.
See, what go through, what goes through my mind is, back to urban design, back to Mike's conversation about the street signs. So, if you look at something individually, are we in favor of more holiday lights? Well, who wouldn't be, all right? But there's a trade-off, right? So, Mike kind of, and I understand why, kind of dismissed why we'd be spending money to get street signs to look the same. Well, you know, that's permanent, this is over a four-week period. So, to me, it's a zero-sum game, is what it comes down to, just an observation.
Well, if we're, first of all, I think we should not put anything in the budget this year, but we should look at this when the lights are up, and do we have our own lights and we put them up, or do we hire somebody to do them?
No, we hire a contractor to come in and do them each year.
So, the idea that Councilman Forbes suggested is, we'd have to hire somebody to put additional lights, unless we left them up all the time and did our own, okay?
And we have ordinance that prevents that.
But, but we should, we should take a look at what they are, I mean, I looked at it last year, this seemed fine to me, so I didn't see, like, we needed any additional one, I thought they were beautiful, but once the street is entirely done, we could take a look at it and see if we needed more, but right now, I think it's fine.
And so, just so we're clear, the city does not own the lights.
Right.
Contractor doesn't just put them up, they also own it.
Right.
So, releasing the lights for that amount of time.
Same thing happens, right, they're, they're a lot of money.
Okay, thank you for that.
Fourteen, we're almost there, guys. Replace exterior lights with LED bulbs.
All right, Nicole's on her way.
All right, what this one is for, we do have, in the current budget year, to replace the lighting in community park parking lots, as well as in Riverside Park, so that would include the Lyles, by the Banchel, Depot, all of those areas. What this number is for is to replace all of our sports lighting to LED. That is a lot more expensive in terms of switching all the soccer complex, baseball fields. The cost estimate we got for the baseball field was about two hundred thousand dollars, as well as the soccer was a little bit less at a hundred and fifty thousand. The smaller facilities, like the skate park, and the tennis courts, and the footsall, ranged between eight and fifteen thousand dollars. So, this was just wondering if you would like to do the sports lighting, too.
Did you say two hundred?
Yes.
Is it something that has to be done all at once, or when a light goes out, can we upgrade it to an LED?
We could replace the entire pole, we could do pole by pole, we couldn't do light by light, because that would be more costly, because you have to change out the fixture. Our current fixtures are not equipped to just put in an LED bulb, you have to change the fixture itself.
Because, what's the company on O-41?
That's who we worked with, Global Tech.
Okay, well, because I know they make retrofit kits that work in a lot of existing lights where they can retrofit.
They can, but it's actually, it's more, it would be more costly, because we don't have a lift truck, and neither do they, so they rent it when they come out and do those things. So, it would be more costly, we can, it would just be costly.
If a light goes out, we're renting a truck and going up there and putting a light in.
Currently, we wait till several are out, yes.
Same thing, you get a truck to do it.
Yeah, or we go to the fire department and ask for help, those are the things. But, yes, we can do a retro kit for the fixture, because that's how we did the rec center gymnasium, but it would be a little more cost-effective, because you can buy, the more you buy, the cheaper they are as well, if we did pole by pole. And we can get a cost breakdown for that, we don't have that currently.
What's?
I think there's another approach here, you, there are companies that come in and do it for free, and where they make their money is, they, the billing to run the light, they recapture over the course of the next five or 10 years, and there's no outlay of fund by the city or individual. So, I'm not sure if we've been approached by any of those companies, but they exist, too.
We can definitely look into that and see if there are companies.
The only other question I would have is, could we just replace the ones, like, do a field by field, because there's four fields.
Sure.
Use the ones that's the most used, because obviously, they're using the most electricity, so if it's the baseball and the softball field, hey, let's do those first, X.
Sure. Yeah, we can definitely do, split it up and do them in different sections, it would just be a little more cost-effective not to do light by light.
Yeah, I'd do field by field.
Sure.
Playing baseball in, under the lights, and you have two different shades.
It would be difficult to catch a ball, yes, it would be pretty difficult.
I just want to comment, because we retrofitted our building to LED lights, and we did go to a company initially that gave us a contract that was going to take our electric savings and pay for it, but when we did, we did another, we happened to have an engineer on our board that was able to look at it on a, on a basis, and it was not cost-effective if you look at it over the long run, but maybe it'd be different for us. And what we finally did, we did it in-house, because we didn't have to go up on, you know, but we changed everything on our own, we bought all the bulbs ourselves, you know, on a wholesale basis, and there might be a different way of getting, it was, it was a significant save, I mean, it was worth doing it.
Our lights, once they're in, we could do bulb by bulb if they're reachable by the trucks that we have.
Right.
It's more, our lights are so old, the ones in the parking lot were put in in nineteen ninety-six, there isn't a retrofit for certain ones, we'd have to buy a new fixture.
Again, sharing our experience, we found that we changed the receptacles, because it wasn't, we didn't just change the bulbs, we had to, that was a cost of, including our underwater ones, we had to do that, too.
Great, yeah, no, definitely.
But we did it on a case-by-case basis, and we just, I mean, we saved like probably forty, forty percent of what the original cost was, it was amazing. So, I think with a little work, maybe, we could do a little bit better, but I think at least do it on a piece-by-piece basis would be helpful.
Sure, we definitely can do that instead of all at once, not a problem.
Okay, so, there's some direction on that, right?
Yes, we've got directions, we'll add some appropriate numbers.
All right.
Okay.
Well, you're going to look into all these concepts?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are we through with the TBTs?
Yep.
And then a bottom three.
What's the bottom, oh, down here?
Well, that's great, Andy, you got the stormwater management fee in there?
All right.
On the bottom of the page, discussion items.
Yeah, you already.
What I was chatting about before. So, my answer to that would, it says, there has been discussions regarding consideration of a stormwater management fee, if council has an interest in this, we're recommending procuring professional services to provide recommendations and methodology of implementation. Audrey, do you have an institutional memory, Ben told me once, this was looked at in the city once, stormwater management fee, years ago, I had a conversation with him about it.
This was one of the first items that city council addressed when City Incorporated.
Okay.
The city went through the CCNA process and hired Hartman and Associates to evaluate whether or not we could put a stormwater utility fee. They went through the exercise, I believe it was about two years or three years that they went through it. There definitely was projects available, the problem was setting up a fee, and I can go into the legalist, the differences between fees, taxes, assessments, if you want, but we'll do that later. It came up that a fee would not be, council decided against doing the fee for legal reasons, and at that time, it was Neighbors Giblin, I forgot the last name there, who made the determination that the way the fee would have to be structured is, you would have to not charge a fee, or charge only nominally, for most of the planned developments that have a water management district permit.
Right.
And then, the people who would actually pay the fee, because the fee requires that you actually get a rough benefit, would be people that were not within those communities, except for maybe some streets and some minor things, that it turned out it was not cost-appropriate, and at that point, city council made the determination to use their regular ad valorem rather than placing an assessment or a fee.
Okay, thanks. So, Naples does have something like this, and they do have the issue about communities. But Matt, a lot of what you do transcends gates and non-gates, right? Under the words, a lot of it is responding to, it's basically a Florida DEP requirement.
We've got, we've got two issues that we respond to, in the, in the older neighborhoods that, that aren't, weren't built, kind of as a tract development.
Right.
We do respond to flooding issues, that the open swell systems fill in, and they, not flooding, but localized flooding, I suppose. So, we, we do a lot of maintenance along those areas, kind of with our ad valorem revenue, like Audrey referred to. And then, in addition to that, within the, within the basin management action plan for the, for the water quality part of it, and that's, that's really where the things like Pine Lake Preserve come into play, or Feltz Avenue, and those are, those are treating nutrients in the water, they're not really treating the volume portion.
So, if I remember right, Altera did two studies, right, one in two thousand and ten, one two thousand and eleven, it's exactly the thing you're talking about, one was volume, one was quality.
Absolutely.
So, it seems like there could be a mix and match here.
Yes. The one thing I would, would, would point out to Audrey's point is, if you, you know, if we go down a study, the quality rules have a very distinctive boundary, when I presented about, if you recall, it kind of comes down, so, that might be something just to.
Interesting.
To think about.
And that goes to the point Fred's often made about, well, you know, this pollution's coming from all over the place, but yet, they're kind of saying, foot projects here or there.
Yes.
Do we need a study?
Yeah. Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So, there's been some changes in law, mostly with special assessments and dealing with fire, and things that normally would have been considered general services that are not. We do use Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson, thank you, John, for, every now and then, for financial advise, as a financial advisor, because they're a legal firm that specializes in financial advice. I could call and see if somebody could provide some information to council, provide a presentation, and explain this, if you're interested in.
Well, I guess so, but I mean, I'm kind of thinking that, I know something's legal, every city in Florida has.
Absolutely.
But us, all right, so, I, I think that advice is more on the contours of the points you've been talking about. I'd be more interested in, I mean, can somebody maybe call, chat with the city of Naples?
Sure.
Yeah, and they've got, you know, I don't know if the proportions are, but, you know, I looked at something on their website, and it said, you know, it was clearly talking about certain areas that have their own water management systems, or they get a reduction in fee or whatever, but maybe we can just learn from what they've done, and start that to try to get it fun. I'm not saying we should, we will do this, in my view, but I think we should be looking at it.
Look at it.
Yeah. Thanks. Are we okay on that, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So the next one is, oh boy, here we are, Ann.
Yeah, this was just to make sure that you're aware
Aware.
That there is something that could be affecting us back in 2019.
Right. And that's next year's problem.
Right, right, exactly.
And three is actually on your other list, so why don't we just handle it on your other list?
Okay.
All right. I had, we didn't close a loop on two items, maybe more than two. But one was Nigel's request to go from 45 to 50, which I'd be okay with. And Dallas asking for some incremental money, I'm not sure it's the whole 50 he was asking for, but I'd be okay with that, too. But why don't we take that in pieces? Are people okay with Nigel's request from 45 to 50?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Now Dallas, can we just peel the onion on this, somebody?
I just want to make a comment, because I thought when we had that presentation on the historic village, that they said that they would take care of the study costs. And I guess what's happened is they come back and find that they can't get any funding. I thought they were trying to get grant funding.
They're trying to get grants, that's true.
And they did also say, I believe at that meeting, was that if they weren't able to get funding, they would just use the funds that we already have allocated to the, to them in our budget. So that's all changed. So I think what I would like, and they also said that they would at least want to have flexibility, so I'm definitely in favor of flexibility. I don't know about all these numbers when you add them up. Did we get a total number there?
110, is it 110?
So they have programming funds for their committee, which is the historic signage, it's also, there's recording fees when you designate a property, and that is, they're asking that to be at 10,000.
Is that where it is now?
They already have it. This current fiscal year, it's at 10, and the city manager's proposed budget, it went to 8, but they're asking for you to retain it at 10, as last year's. Additionally, then, they had 50,000 in their grant program. They're at, and from what I understand, from Dallas asking, he was asking you to maintain that at 50, and then he was asking for an additional 50 for the feasibility study for the historic village. But then Ellie said, at a minimum, at least some flexibility or some work within the grant program that they have, the 50, that they don't necessarily have to use all of that for grants, if, that they could use a portion of that for feasibility study. So I don't know if you want to look at a mix of leaving it still one pot and see if the grants plus whatever the council feels appropriate towards a feasibility study, or just leave it all at the 50. But this city manager's budget has them, I think, at 40,000, it's a slight reduction of the city manager's budget.
So in other words, city manager's budget has a 40 for the 50, 8 for the 10, and nothing for the other 50.
And they're asking to retain last year's funding.
Right. Do you, do you happen to be aware of any details about the cost of the feasibility study, other than what you heard today?
They've been looking at a scope of work that they've been drafting for a long time, and what they've done is they keep scaling it down to see if they could take it more in bite sizes. Because, like Ellie did say, there is a possibility of going after grant funds for acquisition or development, because that's a permanent piece. So if you acquire a property, you know permanently it's going to be available as a store preservation. The feasibility, the concern with the Department of Historical Resources was that they couldn't necessarily show that if the study was accomplished and no other further movement went forward, there's no actual preservation occurring with that. There is a possibility of working with them, you know, scaling back that to 25, 30 as a step one, and seeing where that goes in a scope of work. I know they would like to see the 50, but that's a decision that we, that the board would have to work with whatever you all decide to appropriate.
Are you guys all right with 25 to 50, 10 and 25? Because they said they could use some of the 50.
Yeah, if we give them that flexibility, they save money on the grant, or not the grant, but their preservation side, and they can roll it over into the feasibility.
They could decide not to, at a certain point, to stop awarding any grant funds and preserve that towards the feasibility study. They still have to complete
75. 75.
A scope of work that's approved by the city council as well, and then they have to negotiate a contract with that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, instead of the total 110, give them a total of 85 with the flexibility in that.
Within the grant fund, so they could freeze the grant funds at a certain point and move forward.
Correct.
Well, they were asking for 55, but they also asked if they carried over the 17,000, it would only be 38. So, they're not asking for 55 plus 17, they were saying they would like 55, but if we could carry it to 17 this year.
They wanted us to designate the 17 that they didn't spend this year. It's the same difference. It's the same difference, semantics, so if we just give them a total of 85.
They were trying to justify the cost savings to council.
They can't carry over, it's gone if they don't spend it, that's, so it's up to us to carry it over to factor.
I don't want to belabor, violate my own rule here, we're just putting it in here, we can worry about how we appropriate it later. But I do have questions about exactly what, I love historic preservation, there obviously are issues about space and where it goes, and is it more mixed through neighborhoods and all of that, but that's for later.
Correct, and that's part of the scope of work of the feasibility study, is there appropriate lands that even would accommodate this need? And then are also additionally, an inventory of what structures would be appropriate for relocation. Until they can get that information, they wouldn't be able to even move to a next step of acquisition and/or placement.
So why don't I suggest a 10-minute break, then we'll come finish up. With the rest on Ann's list, F, G and H?
Yeah, whatever else is on her list.
All right, is that fair? At 3:10?
Sounds good.
Okay. Want to keep going?